Go through and check to see if the things that we talked about are implemented in here. Because I, we caught that one, I don't know what else. Yeah. Yeah, that one, I think this has to go somewhere because he can't get.
Or.
But you can't move any closer to the door, but maybe if you turn it this way.
Or why don't you?
That's still not, I don't know.
Okay.
Is it light, it's a little screen?
Yeah, it's a little shorter.
I just have to move.
Thank you.
So that's all I have on that, I mean, until she comes, so I guess.
So we'll go on to fourteen.
I guess we could go on and then we'll do this at eleven.
District banking, that was something Tiffany was looking into.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, we can still do that, we don't need Linda here for that.
Okay, twelve.
Yeah.
District banking.
First item is she spoke with Sherri at the bank, and there's a promotion going on until the end of April. Till the end of April, that's gotta be wrong. Cause it's offered to us now, so.
Well, April next year probably.
Yeah, maybe, for a check scanner with remote deposit. Um, and Tiffany talked about it, I think it was, um. There's a one-time cost, they're gonna, you know, with the promotion, you pay part of it. Get what it was exactly now, sorry, I've been kinda distracted, but, um. We both think that it's a good idea for you to, uh, have Sherri come, um, in August, and give a presentation and talk about it. Because it's gonna be a lot easier for the front desk, for one thing, for tracking purposes and everything else, if she could scan them in. Direct deposit with the checks, then the deposits, we actually do do physically, it's only gonna be cash deposits. And then when something comes up, like there was a missing check, um, at the bank that we know went to the bank, and anyway. It's gonna be a lot easier for Cassandra to be able to research checks if we do the scanner, so. With your guys' permission, I'll go ahead and add it to the agenda to have Sherri come and talk to us in August.
Yeah.
And then you can make up your mind.
It sounds good to me.
If you wanna do it, so, we'll go ahead and add that.
Yeah.
Director. Was there additional information on the other banks that we were considering?
Oh, is that getting to that, that was the first item. Second item, that last month's meeting, you guys asked her to clarify if TIAA Bank, formerly Everbank. Was only not able to offer CD accounts or not able to offer money market and savings as well. They stated they cannot offer any type of accounts to public funds outside of their home state of Florida.
Okay.
Also. She continued to do more research on other banks, the interest rates for credit unions are significantly higher than standard banks. I found that Premier America Credit Union, originally recommended by Director Kelling, has the best rates and service. I'm waiting for a callback to confirm they are able to work with a government agency, although when Director Kelling spoke with him, she reported they told her they could. Okay, and that's it for that, uh, that line item.
Okay.
So that's good, um, you go on to thirteen too.
Yes, go.
So, so we're just making a note to add that bringing Sherri into the.
Bringing Sherri in and then she'll continue getting information from.
Cool.
Okay.
Okay, number thirteen.
But I think at some point, we're, we really need to pull the trigger on, on moving some of the money. I just feel like it's the smart thing to do.
Yeah.
With all the, and.
Well, when Sherri.
We know, we know.
When Sherri comes.
We gotta get the information first.
Yeah, we need to also find out what the cutoff, what, how much we need to retain with them for them to, or.
Not jerk around.
Fees gonna change, we need to alter the information.
Right, well, put that on the agenda for her and we can ask her.
So Tiffany could encompass more than just the scanner in, in that line item.
Absolutely.
I'm just speaking out loud so Tiffany can hear the thing, but that way we can discuss other things as well and not only that scanner.
Right, right, because we wanna ask her.
Director Gibson.
I tell you, finding out that so many of these banks won't work with a government agency makes me a little more nervous about moving our money. Like how, it, it makes me, it.
Well, that's online stuff, it was.
Is it the right thing for us to do as a public entity, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but.
It just makes me nervous, if they don't do it for government agencies. Is it okay, is it okay that we do it?
Right. Yes. Because what I would say is that the ones you, we were talking.
The catch, yeah.
The ones we were talking about, Becky, were originally were online banks.
Uh-huh.
And probably because it's too fluid, they probably, there's probably restrictions upon, on, on them being able to do it. But if you go to a brick and mortar.
Brick and mortar.
Brick and mortar, like a regular bank.
Okay.
In California.
Or you, in California, or you go to another credit union, because this is, this, well, this is just a regular bank, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean.
Just out of curiosity.
B A would, would do it.
I know we wanna make some money, but why?
It's not about, it's not about making money.
So we could just go to the brick and mortar type, I mean, there's.
Right.
Several other banks.
Right.
Except B A.
But if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna be able to make a little bit more money, um.
Still good, good.
It's good, I mean, there's risk, there's risk in everything, but my thing is that we have so much money in one bank. And the federal government only has protection over like two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money. If, if that bank goes under, yeah, we may, when they start seizing assets and doing all that stuff. We may get some of that money back, but there's a good possibility that we're setting ourselves up to lose money.
Yeah, agree, but can we, uh, we'll discuss that when we get more information about it.
Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
No, I know, but you asked the question.
Yeah, I don't, no, I mean, I'm just saying in theory, we should look at them too.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Brick and mortar.
Well, and we did look at brick and mortar because we thought going, um.
Cause our original thought was we were gonna get more money and we could do it online, but.
I think online doesn't wanna do it, probably because of oversight, because it's public funds.
Right.
Right.
Personally, I, I don't think that they necessarily can't, it's that they don't want to.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
But so, to answer, to, for your concerns, it's, we, we need to go to, uh, uh, find out information about, from brick and mortars versus online.
And we really need to consider fees and other things, because they can also start depleting what we have. So not only are we not making additional money, we're losing money, which is not necessarily a good idea either.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but then, you, you have to weigh that.
Cause we have to buy new checks.
Right, but you have to weigh that against, you have to weigh that against like insurance. That, that if something major happens, which is a good possibility, um, us losing a big chunk of money.
But for instance, when the economy just totally tanked in oh eight, we weren't affected at all.
Right, but they weren't one of the banks under.
Yeah, well.
You know, they happened to be one of the banks that, that didn't.
Was strong enough.
Was strong enough.
Zion National Bank, so that's what I'm saying, so maybe since they were strong enough in oh eight.
But Congress just, just relaxed all those standards on, on how much money that each bank has to keep. Uh, whereas before, they had reinstituted those things, saying you have to keep this amount of cash. In case there's a, 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 a fall again, well, they just.
Relaxed.
Relaxed all those regulations.
Well, I get that, I'm just.
That opens us up.
I, I, I'm no proponent of Zion National Bank, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I like the bank, I'm not.
If with absolutely no regulations.
Right.
They still weathered the oh eight crash as well as they did. Maybe they're gonna continue to be smart regardless of the, their relaxation again, because there was nothing in two oh eight, and they still handled their stuff well, so.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, cause the other banks didn't, they needed bailouts and everything else, so, a little worried about that. The bailout money, nobody bails us out.
Okay.
So we go back to the banking thing now?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll go back to.
The budget.
The, the, um, eight.
Oh, yeah, eight, actually.
Accounts payable, financial information?
Yes. Accounts payable, financial, Linda.
All right, okay, total cash. One million, two hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-two point nine three. And three hundred nine thousand, nine ninety-seven is in the operating account.
Wow.
And based on, I think we'll have plenty of money to cover the loans that are, will be due.
Which is fifty-five thousand?
In October. I'm sorry.
No, in October, it's more than that, in October, it's a full amount, so it ends up being like a hundred something thousand, but.
It's principal and interest.
It's just. Hundred.
About a hundred and forty, something like that.
So we wanna leave that money there?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Otherwise, cause I was looking at that today, maybe I was thinking I might be able to recommend a transfer more over, but I wanna make sure that we're good for our October payment.
Right.
So I, right after we make our October payment, then we could then readdress it, you know, revisit it and see how much we could transfer over to the emergency fund.
But the general fund is down, so what did we, did we borrow money out of the general fund? I can't remember now.
Uh, yes, we did. We had, but we took that money back, we had borrowed money for.
For the trucks.
Trucks, but that money was put back.
Was all put back?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's back, it's, it's ten, it.
Two hundred and nineteen.
I thought it was higher or not, originally? Like a while ago.
I can double check it, I believe all monies have been returned to that account.
Okay.
So I'll make a note to check, to, uh, check that out.
That hasn't changed in months, cause I, I watch all this every month.
Okay, just let's just double check.
Good job.
I double check it.
Okay.
Not like go back six months or something? Six months and a year.
Well, I'll go back to, through the whole year.
Yeah.
Just to make sure, cause right now I'm also working on year-end stuff. I got more invoices dated June thirtieth, so I can't close out the year-end yet. But I'm thinking by the middle of next month, I should be able to close out, have everything ready for the auditors.
We got invoices dated June now, so, oh yeah, like some of the utilities and.
Right, and that happens, you know, we've gotten some of the month and a half later, I got some dated May.
Yeah, the same day go.
And then credit cards are always a month behind, so. Okay, so check to see if all funds been returned to general, okay, general fund. Um, there was nothing out of the ordinary in the checks this month. I did notice it on the credit card, uh, we got twenty days this time to make that payment. So we're able to mail that payment, and we don't have to deliver it, cause it's not, they have to receive it by the twenty-fifth.
Can I ask you a question?
Director.
Um, okay, I just wanna, I wanna make sure that I'm understanding this, cause when the, when the loan payments come in. Don't, don't we, do we send out a, a check, or do they come into the account and take it?
We transferred the monies, like, around October first, we will transfer the money out of the operating account.
Into the payment fund.
Into.
Into the, um.
Payment fund.
Payment plan account.
Right.
Okay, then they automatically take that money out.
Okay, now, is there, what, why, would there be a problem with, with transferring that money into the payment fund early?
No.
No, not at all.
So if we could get the, if you could get the figure, then, um.
We could do it early.
Why don't we transfer that into the payment fund, that way, that way we see the operating fund the way it, it, it should be, so it's easier to, for me to track.
That's a wonderful fact, I like that.
So, so if we get the amount, you give me the amount, and then I'll make the transfer from the, the operating fund into the payment fund.
Okay, that sounds great, so I'll get that, Sheila.
Okay. I'm new at this, so I'm trying to.
It's just in prior years, we haven't had enough.
Right, right.
We always had to borrow from the other reserve funds.
Right.
In order to make it happen.
Right, but if we have it, it's good that we go ahead and do that.
No, you're saying last.
Right.
What was the, what is our total checks that we, were, the total amount that we have, that we're sending out to?
It was around twenty-eight thousand.
About twenty-eight thousand, okay.
Which is about normal.
Total amount of what, I'm sorry?
Of, of the total checks for, that we're sending out today.
Yeah, that's normal, anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand is normal.
Um, when you do the check detail, it doesn't, it, you, there's no way for them to like total the total amount of checks?
That particular report doesn't do that.
Doesn't do that, okay. Alright.
Director Schommer.
I have a question on, um, again, on our assets, where we're placing the new connections and new connection deposits?
There is a line item on the balance sheet that shows our, on the balance sheet is the deposits. And then on the income statement, once we get the new connection fees, that's on the income statement, there's a line item called new connection.
Okay, so where is it on the balance sheet?
The balance sheet would be, uh.
It's, it's not there on the monthly, it would only be there on the monthly if we actually received an amount?
I'm.
I mean, some of these come up as a zero, so I, I just wonder why it doesn't show up every month as either a zero or an amount, so that we can track it?
On the balance sheet, on the balance sheet, I do have the zero balances, on the.
Where, where is it under, what number is it under?
Well, on the balance sheet, deposits, I'm looking for that, it would be a liability. Customer deposits payable, it said, on the third page, number three, account two one zero two zero.
I guess sixteen, sixteen thousand, six hundred.
And then once it's connected, that transfers from there to the income statement.
And why is that a liability?
Because it's a deposit, deposit you receive from a customer.
It can't possibly all be a deposit. Sixteen thousand, that doesn't make sense.
There, you know, there were, I.
Two connections.
I believe that there was just a depo, a monies, that was, there was a connection, I, um, just thought about it. And that was on the latest report, so.
Well, I mean, I believe it's going under the wrong spot, because that can't, okay. When they gave the deposit, that's only two hundred dollars, we certainly haven't gotten sixteen thousand dollars worth of two hundred dollar deposits. When they pay the actual amount for the new connection, that's not a deposit, that's a new connection, so that should be.
But there's a time in that.
Under new connections is eight thousand dollars.
We've had a couple of times where the people paid the full amount, but it wasn't approved yet.
No.
Well, no, cause they have to, the board, the board has to approve it before we take.
We approve it under the two hundred dollars.
But once we get the money, it's done.
Then we do it a week, two weeks.
Once we get the eight thousand dollars, it's finished.
Yeah, the board, we, we probably just never explained it to Linda, but the board, the, the two hundred dollars is when I bring. The application to the board and say, we could provide water, do you approve it, then they approve it. Then the customers notify, the customer then pays the remainder, but at that time, it's already approved. Once they pay the seventy, the two hundred dollars is for us to do the work.
And we keep that regardless of what happens, right?
Unless, unless we cannot provide water, if we tell them we cannot provide water, we gotta give them two hundred dollars.
Well, we give their money back, but.
But otherwise, we keep the two hundred dollars.
Right.
For six months, that two hundred dollar deposit is a deposit, after that six months, if they don't follow through. Then it's no longer a deposit, it's part of new connections, it's supposed to go into the pipeline amount. If they, if we reject the application because we can't provide water, then we return their two hundred dollar deposit within that six-month period.
So, so the tracking of that, the two hundred dollars.
The longest that two hundred would be in, the payable would be in six months.
Right.
And then you would, then you would say it was income.
So Cassandra keeps a file, because I've learned that she keeps them better than I do, on the thing, so we need to monthly. Look in your file and see if there's any that are six months or older that has not been paid for. Because, and that makes sense, cause six months is, is only as long as it's good for, the real serve, so.
Right, at that point, we take.
After six months, then we need to let Linda know to transfer that two hundred dollars into.
Right, but we automatically deposit once we get the two hundred.
Oh, it's in the bank.
Right, it's the operating account.
But the categorizing of it isn't categorized for six months.
It's not categorized right for, I, I keep bringing this up, and it's still not right, it's not going in the right place on the budget. It's not going in the right place here, cause there's just misunderstandings, so, and, and there's different amounts, and the different amounts. All at some point need to end up in a new connection amount, and at some point, we then transfer that money into the pipeline.
Okay, then I'm gonna put down that I will, um, look and see what's included in that sixteen thousand, which, which account, which properties of those, that's there. And then I will then connect with Johnny and Cassandra to see which we can take out of there, put it, and transfer, cause those monies are in the operating account. And then figure out which item to go into the pipeline account, and then put that into income rather than, um, into a potential liability, right?
Right, because it's not showing up on our ba, on our profit-loss statements correctly either, so.
Right, and that's because of the, I didn't realize that once we get that money, it's already done.
Right.
So, okay.
That's the only thing I really noticed as being a little weird, I don't, I haven't really tracked the other stuff we talked to the auditors about, frankly, I. I've, I, the one that's easy for me to track is the, is the new connections, because I know pretty much what it should be.
Linda, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the long-term liabilities, uh, you show a USDA loans payable other of a negative fifty-five thousand.
That, what that looks like, it didn't get allocated to the, um, that, you look at, what line is that?
Uh, it's account number twenty oh z, oh forty?
On the balance sheet, right?
Yeah, yeah, on the balance sheet.
H three.
Um, I know exactly what happened there, and that can fix it, it didn't get applied, it didn't get applied to one of those three accounts, so I have to, it's probably number six.
Well, that was probably what, an interest payment or something?
That was a payment on all three of them.
Right.
So I just need to allocate it to the right account, then where you see loans payable three million, five thousand, that total is correct.
Right.
It says that that fifty-five thousand was supposed to be applied to number three, number four, and number six. And that, that's the part, so I thought I cut those, but I didn't catch that one.
Alright.
I make, I'll make a note to fix that.
Okay, great.
And we didn't talk about it in the ad hocks, but we still need to get together and go over, and I don't know when that's gonna happen, but we really need to go over our, um, assets. Our fixed assets, that is still really messed up.
Oh, there was one other thing I wanted, I remembered last month, we talked, you asked about the health insurance. And so I wanted to make sure that I mentioned this month, the health insurance, now, is it the correct amount, now that, remember last month, there was an adjustment?
Right, right.
An extra adjustment, so you wanted to know what the actual amount is, and you will see that on the checklist, you ten thousand, six seventy-eight point five six.
Okay.
That may open the door for me to throw some knowledge out, that I just found out through you, Mr. Man. I asked, uh, JPIA how many districts, um, pay, you know, for medical and all of that, and what, and how you go about. Doing something different with it, they said a hundred percent of their members, if they do change medical, it's grandfathered in. So the changes are made to new employees, as opposed to existing employees, but. It's just, they came out with a study on retirement benefits after you leave.
Right.
And that was one of the facts, it was part of that, so if we make changes, they're grandfathered in. So that would be long-term, as people leave through attrition.
I have nothing else to report. Do I hear a motion to pay our bills?
I'll make a motion to pay our bills.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Alright.
Five, fours, or?
I, I didn't look over all of the credit card stuff, did you look over?
Yeah, yeah, I did.
And I was going with that, to answer your question, it was, uh, um, my membership for American Waterworks Association. It was cut last meeting, and I was supposed to mail it, but with everything going on, I never did, so now it's mailed. Linda, would you like that check cast?
Yeah, I heard, especially year-end check, who misses a year-end?
Okay, um, now we need to do.
Um, so.
The one we did.
Uh, I wanted to go back to ten.
Back to eleven. Back to ten?
Yeah, oh, no, no.
No, eleven.
Eleven.
Yes, uh, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, um, proposed budget.
Yeah, so, um, Linda, I have, we went line by line, uh, Director Nyman, Johnny, myself.
Okay.
Uh, and made a bunch of changes. I think rather than read these out loud right now, I'd like to, um, sit with you, maybe if we take a break, it's a break, or right after the meeting.
Okay.
And just have you write down all of these, if that's okay, and then reissue, um, this for all the directors, so that we can look at it, so that we can vote on it quickly at the next, uh, meeting.
Okay, and then that will be good, because then I can include the actual figures through June thirtieth.
Right. And, and we, I believe we're gonna put it on the agenda for the fourth Thursday.
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So, and, and, and I did notice that we didn't have the new connection fees on here, so we needed just that, but I'll go, I'll go over all the other ones line by line.
Okay. Anything that you want to add to the budget, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget, Director Nyman?
Uh, no, Lisa's doing a great job.
So number thirteen?
I meant Director Schommer, excuse me.
Uh, bo, discussion, uh, on retirement benefits for employees.
Good, update, uh, she received a letter in the mail this week asking us to request a login in order to create an online profile for CalPERS and provide more information. She sent the email to request it, but it takes ten business days to get a response, there's no other new information at this time.
So we should just carry that over on the agenda?
Yeah, just carry it over.
Nice.
Okay, a brief recess, do we all wanna take one?
We're almost done, aren't we?
We are.
Oh, yeah, I guess I could do it after the meeting with, can you save?
Yes, I can. I brought cake, Linda.
Oh, you did?
Two kinds.
Oh, really?
Love it, fruit, really.
You too, darling, did you have some?
Yes, I did.
Sorry, Terry, I brought cake. Please take some home, people.
We were on the Lomond County Parks, uh, an extra day of watering for the Fraser Park park.
Well, there's a contractor, I think they're fairly recent, they take care of a lot of parks, like Boron, um, Mojave, I think, here. They've been trying to green up the, the park, they can't do it on the two days a week, um, as you know, we have, yesterday's coming.
That's what, that's what my husband says, oh, they're trying to get it from yesterday.
You know, the pond is already gone, um, I, I would like to see us give the waiver for three days a week, so we don't lose all the grass and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and let them water, it's part of our community and.
Well, I thought they were already watering three days a week.
They just started an extra day.
Just now?
The other day.
Other day.
I started going where I never seen it, going at that.
He came and, uh, he came and talked to me a few days ago, and, uh, said, you know, I, I understand, but I'm doing the best I can, and I can't get it. These, particularly soccer fields, and it's all like foxtails now, and it's terrible, so, if you guys could vote on that, that would be great.
I make a motion.
Is there any chance that that pond's gonna come back to life?
Well, here's the deal with pond, it's fed from a natural spring, they have, when it came back two winters ago, it's because we had some. when it came back two winters ago, it's because we had some snow, and, uh, then it dried right up again.
Yeah.
Until we get some snow packed up in higher elevations to sustain it, I don't believe there's any chance, but, um, you guys are gonna get snow again. Rain doesn't do it, rain all runs down into the creek bed and it's gone, and snow is gonna slowly percolate into the ground and feed that spring, so, um, there's always still hope, if we, unless the weather stays like it is.
There's so many people that still think that your water well.
Of course they do, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but all they have to.
They thought if you choked the damn meetings and you'd know.
All they have to do is walk out in the yard and see that we're literally fifty feet from our old well. And the pond was draining before we ever put a well six online, so.
I kept hearing the helicopters during the fire, and I kept looking outside, and then I thought, duh, they're not getting it from the pond, I'm not gonna see them.
No, yeah, well, I, I saw them every, every flight over us, but I think they were going all the way to Pyramid and doing this big circle, it was like crazy.
I was trying to figure out why they're getting them.
Did you? Wow.
They come around my, over my house.
In years past, they dipped out of Tate Ranch.
I know, cause there's nothing.
But Tate Ranch is full.
I don't think they've done that since Tate Ranch.
Cause they, there's awful wet.
But they didn't, I don't know where they were going, they were doing a fly by over the house.
Well, they might also have a dipping pond set up out there at Chute Pass.
That's what I think they were doing.
Cause that's where the helicopter is based, it's Chute, so.
Anyway, we're out of order.
So you guys gonna vote on that?
Um.
Probably start the motion.
I make, I make a motion that we allow the, um, the park to, um, water three days a week.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero one.
Kill yesterday's or just to continually do it three days a week?
Oh, it would be during the summer months, yeah.
During the summer months.
Otherwise, it's just gonna die, so.
Well, we, so you're adding that amendment.
So I'm adding that amendment for the summer months.
Okay. Cool.
Okay.
Is that okay, uh?
Yes.
Director Schumberg, thank you.
I just got some of these numbers.
Number fifteen?
Okay, two over.
No, she has to agree to it, because it's a friendly amendment.
I know.
Okay, discussion and vote on, uh,
Is it eleven on that?
Uh, bi- bi- biannual?
Did I say aye on that?
Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Four zero one.
Just checking.
Okay, our code?
Oh my god.
Says our code was just updated by Ernest Conan in twenty sixteen, since nothing within our organization has changed since then, I recommend we indicate on the provided form that no changes are needed, if the board agrees, please have Director Kelling check the appropriate box and sign the form. I'll check the box for you here.
Okay. Director Shaw. Uh, Director Schumberg.
I move that we vote, uh, to sign, check the box and have you sign our conflict of interest code as nothing has changed. And it's been reviewed by our lawyer.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Oh, boy, everybody wants to second that one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero one, cause I haven't even read it, so I'm gonna do that. Discussion and vote on, uh, resolution FP two zero one eight zero seven one two dash zero one, authorizing Kern County to act as the agent for, in collecting, uh, in collection of taxes. You got information on that, um, Director Schumberg?
Okay, I, I don't think we necessarily need to, I mean, I guess you could pass that around for us to look at, but I, I know that, um, Tiffany has been doing, I, I used to do this, and Tiffany's been, you know, and before that, our other manager used to do it. Anyway, she's been doing a great job at this, working with Cassandra to figure out what, what this is, is it's the taxes, both the, um, the two that, we get one tax automatically, which we don't vote on. We get one of the taxes is for the standby fees, which is five dollars per undeveloped lot, which she has gone through painstakingly and removed, I believe the ones that shouldn't be on there. Um, hopefully we've fixed all of those, so, uh, I think that, you know, that was fixed a while ago, and that should be fine, and then the other one is, are the accounts that have not been paid in over six months, and we, uh, vote that the county collect on, as part of the tax roll, the fees are owed to us from the um, owners who did not pay, um, so unless you think that there's any issue with it, I'm going to say that they probably did everything right, they've already sent all this stuff to the county, the county's reviewed it. So we just need to authorize that they collect for us.
Okay.
You gonna make the motion?
So I, yeah, I think I'll do it with you guys, I'd like to move that we vote yes on, or vote on resolution FP two zero one eight zero seven one two dash zero one, authorizing Kern County to act as the agent in the collection of taxes.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can you, uh, come over sometime next week and sign the final copy?
Um, that's something that, that.
It's you, no, usually the treasurer signs it.
Have you?
It's me? Yes, yes, just let me know.
Cool.
And then usually the secretary attests to it.
Before next.
Need to sign it, but she might be sending it to her clerk.
Has to be next, before next Thursday.
Just checking, let me see if I need to sign it.
What's happening Thursday?
Cause I'm gonna probably go out of town for a couple of days.
Oh.
It's got a, no, she's signing it as clerk in board. Cool.
Oh, I don't have to sign it, but.
No, you do.
You have to sign it.
I was just asking if I needed to attest.
You weren't getting out of it, we like your signature.
Okay, review and approve the meeting minutes for six fourteen, twenty eighteen.
So we didn't get these, I didn't get them, um, so I haven't even looked at them.
I got it, and I went over it.
Oh, you did, okay.
You find anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of problems.
Okay.
Um, on, on page one.
Hold on, let me find it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, it says ro, um, also present at the meeting under roll call of directors. It says also present Johnny Allison, Linda Sheldon, and Cassandra Zino. But right after that, and that's my other problem, it says, uh, that Linda Sheldon hasn't arrived yet, so how could she be present?
Yeah, she needs to put in where Linda arrives and not under the roll call.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then.
I agree.
And then on the, um.
And, and if this has been happening all along, we might need to, I don't know.
I, you know, I don't.
I don't know if I caught that before.
And then when to, it, uh, move that we place, um, items so and so and so and so, uh, or until such time as our bookkeeper shows up, I think it would be better to say arrives. It just sounds more professional.
Yeah, arrives, I agree with that.
Like, we're gonna hope she shows up, I mean, right?
I, I agree, it's probably what I said, is that me making the motion, yeah, so I probably, she, she's writes exactly what we say most of the time, so.
Oh.
That's what we say.
Yeah.
Okay, oh yeah, that got past me that it was a motion, okay.
Yeah, but I agree, it's, um.
Okay, yeah, you're right, you're right.
No, but I think if, if we're okay with that, it really can be arrives.
Yeah, and, and I think we should in the future make sure we say that.
And, um, that, that's all.
I'm sure it was me saying that.
Yeah, and I, I didn't find anything else, but, um, if somebody else wants to, oh no, I guess I did, on page four. Uh, the bottom of the page, move that we take a ten-minute recess, it didn't know what time we started the recess, just when we came back.
Oh, okay.
Is that petty?
No.
Um, no, but we may not have noted it, so that's something we need to make sure Director Kelling notes, his little chair. I think Tiffany can probably tell from watching the, the tape, the, how long it was and figure that out and add it.
That's all I have.
Do we wanna go through and?
Uh, you wanna go through and see if you find anything?
That's what I'm asking, everybody else.
Well, I've just been looking, I haven't seen anything, I'm on page five.
Don't start coughing too, Lisa, breathe. Can I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
Sure.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for June fourteenth, twenty eighteen, with the amendments given and with the possibility for additional amendments for typos or other errors that we might not have caught or that maybe need to be corrected.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero one. Okay. Uh, discussion on future agenda items.
So I think Tiffany, if you're listening to this, we did it all through the, we made adjustments all through the, uh,
Meeting.
Meeting, so listen carefully. I can't, I can't think of anything else in this.
Nothing that we need to add on, but we haven't already added on?
No, I mean, at some point, and I think Johnny said he was glad, I mean, at some point, I think we need to see if there's some way to look up the mineral rights for us, cold springs, cold water, can you?
Yeah, that should be an agenda item, cause like you said, there's, unless there's a need.
I just think we forget about it though, if it's not an agenda item.
No, what I'm saying is that if somebody, if you want somebody to start going through some of the stuff that Gina did, that's the whole slew, she had half of Gina's stuff left with her, you know what I mean, her information, so.
Well, it doesn't need to be on the next agenda, but if we could plant it in our brains.
This envelope needs to be corrected, it doesn't, um.
I mean, I don't even know how to check on.
It's gonna come back to us.
That's what I'm saying, if, if they approach us and they wanna do something, then that, at that time, we would, um, find out who to talk to and hire to get the right, you know, who's got the rights, but in the meantime, I don't see why it's.
I know, right?
Um, all I know is that, um, we asked about mineral rights under our home, and they told us it would cost us twenty-five dollars.
Take some out of it, come on.
To Kern County, down there on trucks and somewhere, and.
I just wanted you to know.
It would cost us twenty-five dollars to find out.
Yeah. To find out if you could get the mineral rights?
Yeah.
No, we.
I've been, I, I've just saying that unless there's a need.
Showing us how much, but we didn't.
Like somebody wants to take our mineral rights and we need to prove that they can, which we need to do that.
They're billing us as they ship it to us.
Because the mineral rights are already, a lot are sold.
That's why you see the bill, and then the charges as they ship us.
Cause that's just extra added workload for.
You see, these are the charges that they've shipped us, because they didn't send.
Unless you directly do it, of course I'll do it, but I don't see any reason to spend money to research it.
I will hear a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that motion.
Uh, we will adjourn that, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero one, and it is, uh, seven forty-three?
Nice.
Yes.
Can I put those in the folder for Linda?